Good evening and welcome to the October 14, 2021 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meeting pursuant to paragraph 42 of Executive Order N 08-21 executed by the Governor of California on June 11, 2021. And as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the Planning Commission meeting will allow members of the public to participate and address the Planning Commission during the open session of tonight's meeting. Public comment may be submitted by telephone during the meeting and prior to the close of public comment on an agenda item by calling 916-774-5353. If you call, you may be placed on hold until the attendant can answer. The broadcast is delayed by up to 30 seconds when watching at home. When your call is transferred, you will have three minutes for public comment on items not on the agenda and five minutes in which to speak on a regular agenda item. Your time will be monitored and you will be informed when you have one minute left to conclude your comments. If you're listening to the meeting while calling in, please turn down the volume on your speakerphone and do not use the speakerphone option as it may create difficulty for the Planning Commission to hear your comments. And I now will call the meeting to order. Lupi, could I please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Brashears is absent. Excuse Commissioner Caparuso.
Here.
Commissioner Covington is absent. Excuse Commissioner Haganjos.
Here.
Commissioner Pryor.
Here.
Vice Chair Martin.
Here.
And Chair Jensen.
Here. Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lupi, could we please begin with some staff introductions?
Yes, Lupi Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Joe Speaker, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Jensen and Commissioners, Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Chair Jensen. Commissioners, Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Chair Jensen and Commissioners, Kenny Shallow, Associate Planner.
Good evening, Matt Todd, Principal Engineer.
Thank you. Now's the time in the agenda for public comment. The public comment period is the time for anyone who would like to address the Commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. I know staff's monitoring the phone and we'll give a little bit of time to see if we do any have any phone calls.
Chair Jensen, there's no phone calls for public comments on items not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, the Planning Commission, or staff. To request that a consent item be considered separately, the public may again call us at 916-774-5353. Tonight's consent calendar consists of two items. Item 5.1 is the meeting minutes from September 9, 2021, and item 5.2 is the West Roseville Specific Plan Parcel F6C1 located at 2751 North Hayden Parkway. And for the record, that's PL 21-0245. Again, we'll wait to see if we have any calls that come in. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to see this item pulled? No one from the audience,
Chair, there are no phone calls for any items on the consent calendar tonight.
Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendars listed?
Move to approve Consent Calendar Item 5. Second?
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Caparuso and a second by Commissioner Martin. Lupi, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Vice Chair Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso.
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor.
Yes.
Commissioner Haganjos.
Yes.
And Chair Jensen.
Yes. Okay, moving on to requests and presentations next on the agenda. Before I begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. We will first hear the staff presentation, then I'll take questions from the Commission, then I'll open the public hearing, then the applicant will have a chance to make a presentation, then I'll open the public comment and the public will have an opportunity to speak. We'll then close public comment. The applicant will have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal if so desired. I will then close the public hearing and the Commission may ask questions of staff. And finally, the Commission will consider the item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from the staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. As a reminder, the public comment, as a reminder, public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. If you call, you may be placed on hold until staff can answer. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. So we have item 6.1, which is a request to approve a conditional use permit and design review permit modification for 180 North Sunrise Avenue for the record, file number PL 21-0230. Kenny, can we have your presentation, please?
Yes, you may. Good evening again. My name is Kenny Shallow, Associate Planner, and I'm here tonight to present the Echo Park Automotive Project. The project site is located within the infill planning area at 180 North Sunrise Avenue and is adjacent to a Hyundai dealership to the north, Enterprise Auto Rental and Sales to the south, North Sunrise Avenue to the east, and I-80 to the west. The site has a zoning and land use designation of community commercial, but prior to the zoning, it was zone planned development for commercial auto sales and service. In 2003, the city council approved a rezone to change the zoning to the current community commercial designation. This was done in order to allow Fry's Electronics, which was a retail use, to occupy the site. Concurrent with this request was a design review permit to allow development of the site, which consists of an approximate 145,000 square foot building with parking, lighting, and landscaping. Fry's no longer occupies the site, so the building is currently vacant. The proposed project will renovate the existing building, which will be occupied by Echo Park Automotive, a vehicle reconditioning and auto sales use. As required by the zoning ordinance, the project includes a request for a conditional use permit to allow auto sales and a car wash in the community commercial zone. A design review permit modification is also requested to modify the building exterior and to construct an approximate 2,000 square foot car wash building. And Echo Park has rehabilitated former Fry's stores in different locations, and an example of one is shown here. This is located in Duluth, Georgia. This is the proposed site plan. Vehicles will be reconditioned inside the building and prepared for sale. The vehicle reconditioning process includes inspections, detailing, maintenance, and painting. The reconditioning is only provided for Echo Park's inventory as they are not open to the public for vehicle service needs. The vehicles will be displayed outdoors within secured parking lot areas along the eastern and southern portions of the site. The car wash will be constructed within the parking lot to the south of the existing building, and minor modifications to the landscaping will be made to accommodate the car wash. The project meets the zoning ordinance parking requirements, which is based on a ratio of one space for every 1,000 square feet of outdoor vehicle display area, which amounts to a parking requirement of 155 spaces. Access is provided by a signalized driveway on North Sunrise Avenue and a second driveway to the south of the signal that provides for right-in and right-out turning movements. Also, the project will maintain the existing reciprocal access agreements between the adjacent properties. As mentioned, the site is adjacent to auto-related uses, and given the proposed use is also auto-related, the project is compatible with the surrounding uses, and no impacts are anticipated as the car wash and reconditioning services will be conducted within enclosed buildings. The existing building elevation is shown on the top image here, and the proposed is on the bottom. The original building architecture incorporated a train theme with a water tower and a trestle feature that wraps around the building. It also has a projecting train element that appears to be crashing through the front of the building. The project will remove the water tower and train elements and will incorporate a modernized design with a new color palette. The building will still have beige as its primary building color, but will incorporate more neutral grays, and a green color will be used minimally as an accent band on the front elevation. The existing building materials will remain unchanged, which consist of concrete in an IFRS finish, stone cladding, wooden trestle features, and a standing seam metal roof. Lastly, the building will have a new storefront with new windows and doors. Overall, the project will maintain consistency with the community design guidelines through its mix in colors and materials, varied roof forms, and use of architectural elements. The car wash building is rectangular in shape and will be beige with stone cladding to match the main building. The car wash will be used by employees only and is not open to the public. The car wash is required to recycle a minimum of 75% of its water use. The project was exempt from environmental review per SEQA Guidelines Sections 15183 for projects consistent with the general plan EIR and per Section 15301 for minor alterations to existing structures and facilities. Overall, staff finds the proposed use is a beneficial reuse of the site, is compatible with the surrounding development, and will not adversely affect persons in the area. The project complies with all applicable goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, general plan, and the community design guidelines. At this time, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the required findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit subject to six conditions of approval and the designer review permit modification subject to 51 conditions of approval, including the revised condition nine that was sent to the Planning Commission earlier this morning. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Kenny. Is there any questions from the Commission at this time?
Just one question. So on the picture that's in, I think it's Georgia, it showed signage in the front area, but there's no signage on this development plans. I'm assuming signage is going through planning. It's a separate permit.
Correct. Signage isn't approved as part of the design review. It's a separate process.
And it'll be kind of by the front entrance of where that shifted front entrance is?
Yes.
Any other questions of the Commission? Okay, then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I'd like to invite the representative for this item to address the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, my name is Gregory Thatch, and it's my privilege to represent Sonic Automotive here tonight. We have two visitors with us from North Carolina from Sonic who have joined us tonight, Mike Cusack and Jenga. I'm going to get this right. I know I'm going to get this right. Galopitos?
Close.
Close. I'll get it right someday. Anyway, they're here and they're actually catching a flight back shortly, so they've had one long day. We do have our architects and civil engineers available by phone if by chance you need them. Just a little bit about Sonic. Sonic is a Fortune 500 company and publicly traded and the fifth largest auto retailer in the country. Echo Park is a subsidiary of Sonic, and it is the subsidiary that deals with used car sales. They liked the Sacramento market. They looked, and they found this site, and this site is a perfect site for them. It and I would submit that it's a perfect site for the city as well. This is a very difficult reuse. This is 145,000 square foot building. We just don't see 145,000 square foot users anymore for these types of buildings. And so I think it's serendipitous, really, that there's been such a good fit. We know there have been code enforcement problems out there and could have increasing problems down the road, so this will solve that. Our client gets possession towards the end of the month, and they're looking very much forward to it. I will say, as Kenny has said, that it is bookended by auto sales. We're going to maintain the access agreements with our two neighbors that was previously zoned for auto sales. It's got a signalized entry. Everything is going to be done indoors, not outdoors. It's going to employ at the beginning 75 people, 139 after a few years, and some growth. And it's going to bring a lot of sales tax to the city of Roseville. We agree with all of the conditions, and I don't always thank staff when I make these presentations, but I've got to say, you've got a great staff here. And always working with Greg and Derek, and this is my first time working with Kenny, it's been a joy, and you should be very proud of them. So with that, I would thank you and answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Thatch?
I've got one. So we saw the Duluth project. There's, this is the third, though. Is that correct?
The Duluth is the, is the first Fry's that they've done. This would be the second.
This would be the second. Okay. Great. Yeah, it was good to see that. I also appreciate the use for the space. I think that, you know, that's going to be a, that would be a very difficult use to fill and space to fill. So I'm glad that we can see what it looks like in another part of the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the Commission?
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Sorry. I have a question about the interior space.
Yes.
Kenny said in our presentation that it was to be used for refurbishing vehicles. Will there be a showroom section to that? And how large will the showroom be?
Yes, the cars are going to be outside the showroom, and there were some photographs that we have, but the showroom is a very modern-looking showroom. Virtually everything that is done here is going to be done online, and the delivery of cars can actually take place throughout Northern California. And so it's a, it's a new way of shopping and dealing with things, but yes, there is a place for the customers to come in, to meet with staff, and to look at the inventory, not just in the lot, but online.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public comment. Again, public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. And as a reminder, you'll have five minutes to address the Commission on this item. Staff, is there anyone phoning in yet?
Not yet. We'll just give it a few more seconds, Chair Jensen. Chair, we have no phone-in public comment for this item tonight.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and since there were no comments, there's really no need for the applicant to provide any rebuttal for any of the comments. So Commissioners, are there any additional questions for this item?
I just want to say, Kenny, thanks for your presentation in expressing the same items. We're happy to have this large space filled. I think I remember when that Fry's was put up years ago, there was concern of such a large box being so plain and boring. And now, you know, better than having an empty box just sitting there, we're having a nice, or a group come in and provide a service that's not only a great service for the community, but a good revenue generator for the city. Noise, you know, won't be a problem with it. Everything's inside the house. The car wash is isolated. I think overall, it's a good use of the, of the location and site, and it's a good job all around. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions from the Commission?
I just want to thank you again for considering Roseville and California, given these, we're not seeing a lot of businesses come in this direction, so welcome.
Well, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there any closing comments that the Commission would like to make before we take a motion? Before we take a motion, I just want to echo the comments that filling these big boxes are going to be a challenge for every city, and I think this is a great reuse within the city. So would any of the Commission like to make a motion?
Make a motion. There was an addendum, and there was a, okay. Joe, do you want to read that to me?
Revised condition?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
John printed it out. Okay. Planning make the, adopt the three findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit subject to three conditions of approval. Adopt the two findings of fact and approve the design review permit modification subject to 12 conditions of approval with revised condition nine.
Okay, Commissioner Caparuso has made the motion. Commissioner Pryor has seconded the motion. Lupi, could we have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Commissioner Haganjos?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Chair Jensen?
Yes. So the motion is approved. There is a 10-day, 10-day appeal period for this item, so congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner's staff report. Are there any reports from staff this evening?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick items. Chair Jensen, first, last week, on Wednesday the 6th, the city council approved the legislative entitlements for the Solar Phase 6 specific plan amendment and general plan amendment that you all took action on back in September. Again, I think I sent you an email either yesterday or this morning. We won't be having a meeting on the 28th of October. We had one item that wasn't, didn't have much urgency, so we moved it over into November. But we do have several items for November 18th and several items for December 16th, so we will be having meetings on those two nights. I'd also like to report out that the city, effective October 1st, the city will no longer, this is kind of, I have to explain this. The city policy is to no longer accept phone-in public comments for boards and for city council and all boards and commissions. The reason we had to allow phone-in public comment is once, when, by the time this decision was made, our public notices, which since the pandemic began 18 months ago, 19 months ago, we've been including that option in our public notices. So the public notice for the items tonight included language that indicated that the phone-in option would be available. So we are taking that language out of our public notices, and it will be off of our agendas. And so tonight will be the last night. We have to wait for the phones. I just want to make sure you, you know that, and we're making that, we'll be making that change effective at the November 18th meeting. And that's all I have.
Any questions from the Commission? I do have just one quick one.
Yeah.
I know that you sent us a memo regarding the Assembly Bill that talked about additional units on property. I know there's been some questions.
Senate Bill 9, Senate Bill Number 9, yes.
Is that something that maybe at a future meeting, you can just spend a little bit of time sharing with us, because I think it's good for the public to understand what that really means to them, as well as us understanding how it affects us in going forward?
Yeah. Our, our plan, so we prepared that, that GIM because obviously the, the city, city staff and the city council were getting inquiries from the public regarding the impacts on Senate Bill 9. And just real quickly, that's the Senate Bill that, that I guess portrays itself to end single-family zoning. It allows parcels with zoning. It allows parcels with, single-family zoned parcels to build multiple units on the parcels and to split the parcel into two parcels. There's a lot of criteria that goes behind that, so I know the headline is a little bit misleading. The headlines have been a little bit misleading. So we did prepare that general information memorandum for the council, and I provided it to the Commission. We are, we're outlining modifications to our zoning ordinance to comply with that Senate Bill, and I think we're, we are still trying to get our heads wrapped around all of the different sections of the code. And I think we wanted to get, do a little bit more work so that we could, we could explain what the impacts of the bill, but then also explain how we're going to be amending our code. Because you'll probably get a zoning ordinance amendment sometime early in the new year for us to update our code with that. Obviously, we have to comply with it starting January 1, and we will. But the law as, sign, or the bill signed into law by the governor does allow the city to have some discretion on how it implements that bill. So there are certain areas that we will still retain some regulatory authority. And so we're trying to grapple with which, which of these little sections, how it's going to impact our zoning ordinance.
That makes perfect sense. So you'll bring it back to us at the time where there's some kind of action that we'll need to take as a Commission.
I'm hoping that in one of the next two meetings, we can at least bring back an outline, you know, a quick overview of the bill, and then some of the, some of the, some of the discretion that we still retain, just to explain that.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's been our plan. We just need to get our hands wrapped around what we're going to do first.
Okay. So seeing no other questions from the Commission, do I have a motion for us to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Pryor and a second from Commissioner Martin. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.